To order. If you are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sandy, can we get the roll call, please?
House Member Alabas.
President.
Hopkins.
Here.
Angles.
Here.
French.
Here.
Mayor Shippers.
Here. Okay. Someone want to make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda presented.
Second.
House Member Hopkins.
Yes.
Ingles.
Yeah.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Just a pen.
Alabas.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes. We're all a little disheveled up here. Okay, we good? All right, next we have public comments. This is an opportunity for the public to make a statement regarding any subject matter. Public comment is not an opportunity to ask questions or converse with city staff, council members, or other meeting attendees. Please, when you come up, state your name so that all of us know who is speaking, and write your name and address there. And also, when you state your name, would you please state whether or not you are a resident of the city of Cadillac? And then you have three minutes to speak, and we will all, of course, be neighborly and treat each other with respect during public comments. There any one for public comments? Thank you.
My name is Michelle Trivieri. Yes, I'm a resident of the city of Cadillac. I just wanted to say, we had our very first annual Harvest Days at the Cadillac West Corridor. I don't know if anybody had an opportunity to go. The hay bales are still up. They're just adorable. And it was just such a great turnout with all the stress in the world to see all these people so happy and festive, and children getting in touch in the trucks and putting the sirens on, and all the vendors, and just to be able to go into all the shops and have a nice breakfast and a great cup of coffee. And it was just a wonderful experience. And so it just made my heart really happy to have that in our community with all the strife that's going on in the world. So anyways, I hope you can come to our second annual tree lighting in December. So come on over to the Cadillac West Corridor. It's a beautiful place. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Good evening. Dave Cox is my name. I am not a resident of the city of Cadillac, but I do work across the parking lot as of last Wednesday. I just want to introduce myself. I am the new CEO and president of the Cadillac Area Chamber of Commerce. If she didn't take three minutes, do I get her additional? Or no? No, okay. Scott knows me well. It's hard to keep me within three minutes. But no, first of all, I just want to, it can't go without being said, my experience working with boards, school boards and other boards as well, it can be a thankless job, and I just want to thank each and every one of you for what you do. I mean, there's things that you have to deal with, and then there's things you have to deal with. But I want to thank you, and I know your support, your staff here at the city, under Marcus's leadership. We've had a great relationship. We've done some really cool things collaboratively in partnership with the city, and I expect that to continue in my role as a chamber, if not expand significantly. So I'm really excited about that. If you don't have my cellphone, but Marcus does, Scott does. I haven't heard from him lately, but that's fine. Thirty-one years in education, the last eight years as a superintendent for Wexford, Mesaki ISD and Manistee ISD. To me, life's all about relationships, and I continue to forge those. And if I can have a relationship with someone that will impact our community in a positive way, I'm your guy. So just want to again, thank you for what you do. You don't get enough of that, and I really appreciate it. So thank you for your time. I gotta put my name on here, though.
Look forward to your tenure there and all the good things to come.
You'll have my phone now. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else, I'm gonna close public comments and move to our PFAS update.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. As Jeff already has it ready for the video we're gonna show, just wanted to mention, we had sort of a good news, bad news come our way last week, at the end of the week after the state's final budget was put together for the governor to review and sign. The bad news part impacts PFAS, which is why I'm mentioning this now. We had put in for a special, I'm calling it a special appropriation, but basically for a budgetary appropriation of around $8 million that would have paid to get everybody in the city limits, which is approximately 200, 225-ish homes, connected to a water main. Whether that water main was across the street from their house currently, or whether we had to build a water main to that property, it would have paid to do that, as well as put in the private service line, as well as close down their current private well. But that line item did not make the budget. That being said, we have also made that same pitch through Senator Peter's office, US Senator Peter's office, through US Representative Congressman Molinar's office. So there are some other sticks still on the fire. There's also a potential to look at Eagle and a special type of an appropriation through them. So we're certainly not, you know, giving up the fight in the interim. We're still providing complimentary five-gallon water jugs, and the water also complimentary for anybody that may want to get water from us instead of using their own well water. And if, you know, they're part of that whole M Part area for certain, or if they have a positive test, they certainly have some recourse with the health department to look at getting a filter complimentary for their property as well. So there are options that are still out there, and the one that we are trying desperately to provide is one that is the most cost-effective for those folks. Otherwise, people could look at, if they wish to connect today, using their own means, about 150 or so of the 220 can do that right now. So that's that update. Jeff, if you could please put the video on. This is the second video in a series that we-
Safe and clean drinking water is essential for everyone. At the city of Cadillac's Water Utilities Department, we are committed to delivering this vital resource to your home or business. Because our families and friends are our customers, we take this responsibility very seriously. Understanding how we get your water from its source to your faucet can provide you with peace of mind. Our water comes from two separate well sites, each with three wells that are 300 to 400 feet deep, much deeper than typical residential wells. This extra depth provides an additional layer of natural filtration as the water passes through sand and clay before reaching our intakes. The aquifers that supply our wells were thoroughly tested before the sites were established, and we continue to test the water regularly for a range of substances, including phosphates, chlorine, lead, copper, and bacteria. We also partner with the state to conduct regular tests for PFAS, also known as forever chemicals. Having two well sites is a vital safeguard for our community. Each site is capable of meeting 100% of our community's water needs, so if an issue ever arose at one well site, we could shut it down for maintenance while continuing to meet the community's water demands without interruption. After the water is tested and treated, it is delivered to our community through a network of 72 miles of pipe. Water towers help store the water and create consistent pressure throughout the system, ensuring that water is always available when you turn on the tap. While we work hard to maintain water quality in our public system, the final part of its journey is your responsibility. Once the water leaves our main pipes, it travels through your service line and home plumbing to reach your faucet. Many water quality issues can happen during this last stretch. Older homes in particular may have issues like lead pipes, corrosion, or buildup of sediment that can affect your water's quality and taste. We're proud of the work we do to maintain the quality of the water in our public system, but as a homeowner, you are responsible for the pipes on your property. If you are experiencing water quality issues in your home, consider ordering a test kit from our local health department or the city's state-certified water testing laboratory. We also advise consulting with a licensed plumbing professional if replacement is needed. At the city of Cadillac's Water Utility, we are proud of the work we do every day to keep our community healthy and safe. Cadillac Municipal Water. Regulated, tested, PFAS never detected.
I don't have any other further comments. Jeff, do you have any updates?
Just on the litigation that we're putting in the pre-application for the water, they did ask for some PFAS information, our test results and the wells and that. Even though we don't have any in there, I think it's to establish a baseline in case something ever happens in the future would be the only thing I have on that one, so.
Thank you.
I have a question, okay? Do you have any idea how many other cities are chasing these grants, too? I mean, not even-
Yeah, I don't know, but I do know that we are not alone. And while I think we're special in many ways, we're certainly not special when it comes to PFAS. We are fortunate that we don't have it in our municipal water system, but that doesn't mean, as we all know, it does exist in groundwater, and it's a situation that's everywhere. Thank you.
Okay.
Where's this video available at?
Where is the video available?
So the video is on our website, it's on our Facebook site, it's on the Cadillac Community Television site, which is also linked directly to our website, and it's on YouTube. Alrighty.
Thank you. All right, let's move to. Thank you. Let's move to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
House Member Ingles.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes, motion carries. All right, next, I have a couple of proclamations to read. First of all, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and so I have in a proclamation declaring October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Cadillac. Whereas, three in 10 women, oh, Melissa, should I go out there? Could you just come up and get it afterwards instead of me standing? Do you want to come up after, or?
Yeah, after.
Okay, come up after, because I can't get down there and up here very easily. So I'm gonna begin again. Proclamation declaring October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas, three in 10 women, 29%, and one in 10 men, 10% in the US, have experienced rape, physical violence, and/or stalking by a partner, and reported it having a related impact on their functioning. And whereas, over 1 in 3 women, 35.6%, and 1 in 4 men, 28.5% in the US, have experienced rape, physical violence, and/or stalking by an intimate partner in their lifetime. And whereas, almost half of all women and men in the US have experienced psychological aggression by an intimate partner in their lifetime, that's 48.4% and 48.8% respectively. And whereas, 1 in 10 high school students has experienced physical violence from a dating partner in the past year. And whereas, just 1 in 5 victims say they experienced digital abuse or harassment at school during school hours, most takes place away from school grounds. And whereas, approximately 135 domestic violence cases were reviewed by the Wexford County Prosecutor in 2024. And whereas, the city of Cadillac supports the work of Oasis Family Resource Center to end domestic violence in our community. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, T.I. Shippers, Mayor of the city of Cadillac, and on behalf of the city council, declare October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Cadillac. Resolve this sixth day of October 2025. We pledge to never remain silent about violence. And Melissa Coons is here, as Secretary of the Cadillac Oasis Family Resource Center Board of Directors.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. You may have noticed the purple lights around the light posts downtown. That's all in recognition of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. There's also a vigil. I'll talk about that in good of the order. I have another proclamation. This is recognizing the Cadillac Area Land Conservancy. Is there someone here today for that? There you are. Hi, Chris. Whereas, the Cadillac Land Conservancy, C A L C, was founded in 1995 by Wexford County residents George Rock and Tom Ransbury, born from a shared vision to preserve the land they loved from future development. And whereas, the organization has grown into a vital regional resource for conservation, protecting forests, farms, wildlife habitats, and waterways across Wexford, Mesaki, Osceola, and parts of Lake and Mason Counties. And whereas, despite early concerns that land and monetary donations might be hard to secure, C A L C has flourished. Today, it is supported by individuals, families, and businesses who believe that preserving open space is essential to maintaining northern Michigan's quality of life. And whereas, for three decades, the C A L C has worked to protect the natural, scenic, and agricultural landscapes that define northern Michigan. The organization envisions a landscape where forested landscapes, working farms, and diverse ecosystems are valued and protected, not only for their beauty and biodiversity, but for the health and vitality of local communities. And whereas, the C A L C projects include conservation easements on riverfronts, lakefronts, farmlands, and forests, each representing a promise to safeguard the land for generations to come, C A L C is entirely supported through volunteers and donations. Now therefore, I, T.I. Shippers, Mayor for the city of Cadillac, wishes to recognize the Cadillac Area Land Conservancy this sixth day of October 2025 for 30 years of efforts in conservation in the beautiful nature around us, and appreciate all their continued commitments to preserve the local landscapes. Thank you. Thanks. Okay. Marcus, Ruth Ann's mic is aimed the wrong way. Yep, thank you.
Yeah, I move it because I use it, too.
All right, okay, that's it for today for proclamations. And y'all don't need to stay for the rest of the meeting, but you may. Next, we have communications. Sandy.
Yes, it's being recommended to approve the display of a banner from November 3rd through the 10th, 2025, for the Cadillac Band Boosters Craft Show.
I'd make a motion to approve the display of a banner from November 3rd to the 10th, 2025, for the Cadillac Band Boosters Craft Show.
Support. House Member French.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ingles.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the display of a banner from November 10th through the 17th, 2025, for the Cadillac Area Symphony Orchestra.
Well, I'd make a motion to approve the display of a banner from November 10th to the 17th, 2025, for the Cadillac Area Symphony Orchestra.
Support.
House Member Alabas.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ingles.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the race request and the closure of Lake Street between Cass Street and Harrah Street from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM on November 8th, 2025, for the Toy Town 5K.
Well, they've been doing this for a few years, so I'd be glad to make a motion to approve the race request and the closure of Lake Street between Cass Street and Harrah Street from 7:00 to 11:00 AM on November 8th, 2025, for the Toy Town 5K.
Support.
House Member Hopkins.
Yes.
Ingles.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the closure of the Cadillac Commons parking lot from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM on November 28th, 2025, for Christmas in the park.
I'll make a motion to approve the closure of the Cadillac Commons parking lot from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM on November 28th, 2025, for Christmas in the park.
Support.
There you go.
House Member Ingles.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes, motion carries. It's hard to think about Christmas in the park when it's 80 degrees in October. Yikes. Sorry.
All right.
Marcus, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. There are a few items under the manager's report this evening. The first one is a request for council support regarding a successful grant application that the fire department put in for public safety emergency radios, which, by the way, are very expensive. They're over $1,000 apiece generally, and this grant is gonna be very, very helpful. So the grant is called the Assistance to Firefighters Grant, which is facilitated through the Department of Homeland Security. The grant amount is $202,000, which does require a local 5% match, which breaks it all down to a $192,380.95 grant with a local match of $9,619.05. Per the rules and regs, we have until essentially October 24th to accept or decline the award, so I strongly encourage we accept it. And also, obviously, we will need to commit the funds for this project, which unless I'm wrong, Owen, am I right, it's in the budget amendment for tonight?
It is, yes.
Okay. So this will also be part of later business item for this evening's council.
Well, I'd make a motion to accept the award of the Assistance to Firefighters Grant for portable radio replacement and commit the required 5% matching funds for the project.
Support. House Member French.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ingles.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is a Cadillac Market Project Change Order Request. So the market of Cadillac Commons, as I think everybody knows, went through quite a dramatic improvement over this past summer with the installation of several new features. Probably the two biggest include the bathrooms and the operable garage doors. There was no project contingency established as a part of the project, which in most construction projects, that is something that would be a part of the project itself. The change order amount is to increase the project of by a total of $22,578.40. That is explained in the communication as a split between seven items, pluses and minuses, as a for instance, electrical additions in the amount of $1,200, reduction of bike racks by $449, electrical box in the amount of $1,200, moving of a gas line, additional asphalt's the biggest line item of over 13,000 due to larger excavation requirements that weren't known when the project was originally done. The recommendation this evening, and by the way, all of these numbers equal approximately 2.5% of the original award. And when you look at construction projects and contingency amounts, it wouldn't be, it would not be unnormal to see something much higher than that in terms of the contingency, 5% to 10% even. So the recommendation this evening would be for city council to approve the change orders 1 through 7, as they are itemized in the public packet, to the construction contract with Orshol Construction that increases the contractual amount from $902,377 to $924,955.40 with funds available in our general fund. Owen, did I cover it, or did I?
Yeah, I think so. I'm happy to provide any other details.
It sounded like the biggest expense was the asphalt.
Yeah, so they had narrower trenches for all of the connections that we needed to do electric, water, sewer, and it was gonna cave in, so they just, while they were there doing that, they had to dig them wider, so they dug up more and we had to replace more. So it was unit cost still. It was the same unit cost that they bid, just the quantity went up. And that item number six then was the additional excavation work, too reflecting that they did have to dig that wider for safety and success of the connections.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve change orders 1 through 7 to the construction contract with Orshol Construction, increasing the contractual amount from $902,377 to $924,955.40.
Second.
House Member Alabas.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ingles.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes, motion carries.
Okay.
Introduction of ordinances.
Yes, next section. The city council is being asked this evening to consider the resolution that introduces an ordinance that vacates a portion of Wall Street and also reserves a public utility easement to our favor, or in favor of the city of Cadillac. This is an item that's coming to you as being recommended by the planning commission. Planning commission unanimously recommended this vacation at their meeting held on September 29th. The area is a portion of Wall Street laying south of the Ann Arbor Railroad right-of-way, C.K. Russell's subdivision of Outlet Number 14, city of Cadillac, Wexford County, Michigan. As a part of the public hearing, assuming that is set, is being requested for November 17th, we will have the visuals on the screens to help accommodate that presentation. This is to make the Lakeland Apartments project being owned, or which is owned by KMF Construction, something that can actually go through. I think it's the last piece, Teresa, is that right? So again, tonight, we're just looking at setting the public hearing, and the reason why that it is far out is because of regulations within zoning and this type of, when I say it, actually, I said zoning, but it's not zoning. It's just the regulations regarding vacating property, and you have to skip, so.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance to vacate a portion of Wall Street and reserve a public utility easement in favor of the city, in favor of the city, and set a public hearing for November 17th, 2025.
Support. House Member Hopkins.
Yes.
Ingles.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. I just need to catch up here for a minute. So the next item that we have, and I guess if I can just ask for a moment of clarification, should we do the, should we do the setting of the public hearing for the CDBG now, or later on in the agenda as it's listed? So I'll make sure from a protocol we're okay.
You're asking me?
Yeah, or Sandy. Does it?
Right.
Okay. Well, it's setting of a hearing. Normally, we do those all together, so. Okay, all right, I'll just follow.
By an adopted resolution, I think.
Okay, okay, all right. So thank you. The next one is with regard to the Wexford County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. So this is a document that has been in the works now for several years. In fact, Mayor Shippers and I attended, at least together, I think, maybe one work session, and there's been a series of them. This is the final step in that plan, which requires the local unit of government to adopt a resolution accepting that plan.
And we have a copy of that plan.
We do.
And another copy of that plan, once we, if we accept it, will go up. Where can the public find that plan?
Well, right now, it's on our website as a part of this agenda packet.
Right.
If you're asking for us to break it out, we can do that as well.
Okay. All right. Anybody?
Make a motion to adopt the resolution regarding the two thousand twenty-three Wexford County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan five-year update.
Support.
House Member Ingalls?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes, motion carries.
Uh, thank you. Uh, next item is a request to consider the adoption of a resolution that amends uh the General Appropriations Act. Uh, Owen, I'm turning that one over to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, so you can see in the packet after the resolution is the details of the amendment that's proposed tonight, and it starts in the general fund with the revenue and related expenditures for the radios that we just accepted the grant funding. So one ninety-two is federal grant revenue, and two oh two is the actual capital outlay, so that reflects our our grant match, so the expenditure is a little higher than grant revenue. The Arts Council is an item, the Arts Council approached us and and just asked if there's any potential of some additional funding. Um, we all agreed that it hadn't changed in a long time. Uh, I went back forty years ago in fiscal year nineteen eighty-six, uh we gave them twelve thousand dollars, and this year it was ten thousand five hundred, um which it has been for at least then, you know, forty years, it was a little bit higher, thirty years, it was back to ten thousand, so um I'm not sure why it stayed the exact same for so long, but the thought was to uh kick it up, and that was the request, was can we can we consider an additional five thousand dollars and then kind of commit to trying to notch that up a little bit, at least an inflationary increase, which it's not contract, they are an actual organization of the city, so we can just do that by budget, whoever is sitting in my seat at the time, we just kind of need to remember to notch that up a little bit each year. So forty years ago, it was higher, so I did go back and and kind of confirm that. Community promotions line is just kind of to reappropriate the the funds, the Diggins Hill Project was complete was budgeted for and completed, or budgeted for in the last year, but it was completed after the beginning of this fiscal year, so this just kind of transfers the appropriation to the current fiscal year. And then the last one is a transfer out of thirty thousand dollars. That will cover and give a little bit of flexibility if there are some last-minute things we want to wrap up uh to those additional costs of the market. When we did this, I did want to confirm, you know, we have some preliminary year-end numbers, and and I can tell you, we're, we had budgeted, our final budget was to use about two hundred ninety thousand dollars in fund balance last fiscal year, and we have a chance of kind of breaking even or ended up even a little bit in the black. So some of those additional funds, I think, can obviously more than cover this, but it's not an additional burden on existing reserves, it's kind of new reserves that we really didn't plan for. So um that would be my proposal to to cover those additional costs, and again, on a million-dollar project, it was really about a two and a half percent uh increase in those costs. On page two, the final two items, just kind of appropriate this year's final costs. It's not two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in new costs, this is just to get so that there's plenty of budget there because we're writing the final checks uh in this fiscal year on a project that was originally budgeted for last year. So only thirty thousand in the in new costs, like we've detailed, um but then this actually budgets the amounts that will be received and paid in the current fiscal year. And that's it.
I think it's great that we're giving the Arts Council a a boost, having been a part of many of those arts groups and uh that need this city support. Um, it's it's long overdue, and I um am excited to be able to give them a little raise, and glad that the city is supporting the arts in our community.
Someone want to make a motion?
Make a motion to adopt the res- resolution amending General Appropriations Act for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six as presented.
Support.
House Member French?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, next.
Okay, one more.
Yeah.
Item, uh, this is a um, again, uh, setting of a uh of a public hearing. Uh, this would be for October twentieth, and this is in regard to our application to the Michigan State Housing Development Authority uh for their community development block grant. Um, this is a a very robust process, applying for a community development block grant. Um, a lot of time um uh goes into making an an application, and the application process itself requires that we go through this public hearing. And so, you know, certainly, there is um, you know, there is no guarantee that will be successful. However, there's certainly a high level of optimism and expectation that the state of Michigan um is is favoring us, gi- giving us essentially the green light to move forward to this stage in that process, that being to actually apply. They could have told us not to, so as a for instance. Um, and so, you know, regarding uh regarding the project itself, uh this is all in regard to uh public infrastructure components um off of Chapin and Mitchell Street adjacent to the Cadillac Lofts development, uh installation of sidewalks angled, uh as well as parallel on-street parking, uh updates to the water uh and sewer uh systems uh and street lighting are the types of uh public infrastructure components that we're referring to. Um, I think everyone is familiar with Cadillac Lofts essentially phase one or building one, where we're talking about the orientation of the building uh being on the corner of Mitchell and Cass Streets in like an L-type shape that then creates a a much wider public gathering space. This phase two, we're building two, is going to have the building oriented in the same way where it is on the corner of Chapin and Mitchell Street, creating again a a large area for uh the public, um whether that's a part of um, you know, any, you know, sidewalk events or other events being hosted by uh commercial tenants or whomever in the building, it creates that large that large area, which is something that I think is a very unique and special to this project and given its location in downtown Cadillac. So the uh request this evening is to set the public hearing for the twentieth of October.
Okay.
I would make a motion to adopt the resolution regarding application to M S H D A Community Development Block Grant instead of public hearing for October twentieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Support.
House Member Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, that takes us to minutes and reports, and I see there's uh some minutes from the Cadillac West Corridor Improvement Authority, and also from the Planning Commission that you all can look at on your own. And now we have our second and final public comments. Same um requests as before and rules as before, so if anyone has anything to.
Good evening. My name is Mike Philkins. I am a resident of Cadillac, and I have been involved in the Cadillac Arts Council for most of the last twenty years, serving as president so far for tw- eleven of those. And I I want to thank the city on two different levels. When the Rural Arts Grant expired back in the seventies, the City of Cadillac could have opted to say, no more money. And they continued, after the Rural Arts Grant was gone, continued to provide financial support to um the Arts Council, and it means a lot to me as a person involved in the arts to to have the support that that you all provide, so thank you very much for your consideration this evening.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one else. Excuse me, let's uh move to good of the order.
It's a big kiss weekend.
Yes.
Everybody's fired up, football game, there's going to be a drone show after the game, and before the game, a tailgate thing going on, so we'll see at the tailgate. Okay, there's so much stuff going on, and I live over by the monument, and there's been a huge uptick this summer, especially the last month, of people stopping by the monument. It it really is drawing a good crowd. It's a big deal. Look forward to it.
Great.
Um, yes, so we had uh at our last council meeting, we had a bunch of people um stand up and talk about the farmer's market, and I guess I have um step one of what I would like uh in anticipation of possibly multiple people applying for the same time slots is just a review at our next council meeting of how that happens, what the dates are, who's responsible for that, what happens if there's competing reoccurring events, how we evaluate those reoccurring events, um how we check on their insurance, how we check on their um, I know there was a while we were talking about the nonprofit status versus the profit status and whether we could put a banner up, so I really want a review of that. Um, and if the city manager wants to take that one step further and also describe, you know, how we would um deal with competing competing requests, um I'd also like to know if there's a deadline um and just have that have that process uh out there so that we can um see whether we need to work on that or improve that, or whether we're fine uh the way it is. Um, but I think that's definitely something that we need to know and get in front of. We haven't had that market building um for that long. Um, we do have a lot more farmer's markets than we usually have, as opposed to the just one, there are there are now several organizations, so um I want to know how it's working, how it's been working, and um whether we already have a plan to deal with, um what might be coming um next year, so. And I didn't I didn't know how the rest of the council felt about.
Oh, he's working on it, I thought.
Okay.
I mean, right, Mark?
We're underway, yep.
It should be done in a month or two, maybe? No set, no set time.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I mean, we we need to get it done sooner than later, and we'll have we'll have some update, we can have some update by the by the next meeting, but yes, we're definitely underway.
Or the one after.
And even if it came in two parts, you know, the the information, you know, whether whether there's a deadline, you know, what we have, even if it had to be half and half, I think.
Right, right.
We'll put out what we have, and then and when you finish, that's that's great.
Good questions.
So we are actually updating that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Good.
Okay. Anybody else? Well, I promised to tell you about the the Domestic Violence Awareness Month, Candlelight Vigil, and that's on um October fifteenth at from five thirty to six thirty, and that will be in the market um downtown. Come, join us for to stand up um and let the community know that we are here for you. There's also, I believe, this Thursday, with it being Domestic Violence Month, let me do today, and then go to Thursday. Yes, this Thursday um from, no, next Thursday, oh, I'm going to blow this, sorry.
Go to the Oasis website to check.
Yes, if you go to the Oasis website, Oasis Family Resource Center website, um, still, here it is. So, no, that's fine, I don't have the date, I'm sorry. Um, so I won't even go there with that. Go to the oasisfamilyresourcecenter.org website, and you can find out other events for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and support the shelter and the work that Oasis does.
I'm I'm looking for it for you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Here's a, we're doing a something called Stuff the Blue Goose, which is the um, the Oasis has a an emergency shelter that um families, um, it's women with children or women that are escaping of very dangerous situations, we have an emergency twenty-four-hour shelter, and a few times a year, they we have to refuel the pantry. So it's either this Thursday or next, it's coming up, and what we do is um partner with the state police and the city police and sheriff's department, whoever is up for helping, and we hand out flyers at the doors of Walmart between four and seven on one night, and as people shop, if they want to pick up some of the items that we need to restock the pantry, it really helps out. You can also do that at any time um uh to help support the organization.
So I I didn't find it um on the website.
Okay.
But I did find it on Facebook.
Oh, good.
On the uh Facebook page for Oasis Family Resource Center, they do have um a fundraising activity, uh caramel apple class at the sweet shop on Thursday, October twenty-third at two thirty. Um, and there is a lot of information uh on the site about different activities. There's like tomorrow is Qdoba Day, if you go there between four and eight. Um, um, the Oasis uh will benefit by that, where twenty-five percent of the sales get donated. Um, and I think the vigil is next week? I don't have the date.
The vigil is on the fifteenth.
Okay.
And I found the Stuff the Blue Goose is actually this Wednesday.
Oh, okay.
From four to eight PM.
At Walmart.
At Walmart. I think it's four to seven, but um so if you if you're going to do your shopping anyway and you shop at Walmart, swing by and grab one of those little flyers and help out the folks that help out the folks. Sorry that was so disjointed. That's how I'm feeling today.
You got through it.
Thank you, everybody, and with that, meeting adjourned.